Hey. Council, I call the meeting to order. Good evening and welcome to the March 28th, 2022 City Council Regular Meeting. I am Mayor Ross and tonight's City Council meeting is brought to you live using the video conferencing technology provided by Zoom and tonight's recording will be posted on the city's YouTube channel. Welcome to all and thank you for joining us tonight. City Clerk Estrada, would you please call the roll?
City Clerk Estrada is having some technical difficulties, so I'll go ahead and take the roll tonight.
Thank you.
All right, Mayor Ross?
Yeah.
Mayor Proton Mayhew?
Here.
Councilmember Watton? Councilmember Watton? Councilmember Benson?
Here.
Councilmember Holloway?
Here, and I can see Councilmember Watton is willing to stipulate that he is present.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lasse?
Here.
Councilmember Christensen?
There.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Right, Councilmember Watton? Can you hear us? Right?
Mayor, if I may, it could be the F4 button on Councilmember Watton's computer. You just double check that.
Okay. Sounds like you can hear us. Can we hear you?
Can you hear me now?
Can, yes, we can. All right. So it looks like everyone is in attendance this evening. Thank you, Management Analyst Hornby. Okay. All right, please turn on your microphones, Council, and Councilmember Benson will lead us in the pledge of allegiance as soon as the flag is on. There we go. Councilmember Benson?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As a reminder, members must seek recognition from the chair before speaking, and be sure to raise your hand. So we now move to our first item of business, which is to approve the agenda. Councilmember, have a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second. Motion moved by Mayor Proton Mayhew and seconded by Councilmember Benson. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye.
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 Post name? All right, motion passes to approve the agenda. First item of business this evening is the Agenda Bill 22-047, the Rails Homegate Development Appeal Hearing Part II. At its March 14th, 2022 Regular Meeting, City Council heard the Rails Homegate Development Appeal. After meeting in closed sessions, it up moved to postpone the decision to its next meeting, which is this evening. Requested the staff provide the council with recordings and a transcript of the Historic Review Board proceedings. AB 22-047 involves 10 appeals of the Decision of Historic Review Design Review Board approving a proposed developed project known as the Rails, proposed by owner Tracy Homegate. And because this Agenda Bill involves pledging additional land use matter, I will turn this over to our city attorney. He will address the appearance of fairness, appearance, doctrine, and related matters with the council. City Attorney Sturbank?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the council, you'll recall at the start of AB 22-47, at your most recent meeting, I asked a series of questions related to the appearance of fairness and related to your relationship, if any, to the project, the project site, the applicant, or any of the appellants. I won't go through each of those again individually, but will just pull you to ask whether, because it's been a short period of time, whether your status has changed with respect to having any interest in the project or relationship to any of the parties before you, and I'll just go down the line as I did previously. Mayor Proten Mayhew?
No change.
Councilmember Holloway?
No change.
Councilmember Christensen?
No change.
Councilmember Johnson?
No change.
Councilmember Benson?
No change.
Councilmember Lasse?
No change.
Councilmember Watton?
No change.
Okay, thank you. Since the last council meeting, has anyone received any ex parte communications from any member of the public, whether oral or written? Mayor Proten Mayhew?
I have not.
Councilmember Holloway?
No.
Councilmember Lasse?
I have not.
Councilmember Christensen?
I have not.
Councilmember Johnson?
No.
Councilmember Benson?
No.
Councilmember Watton?
I have not.
Okay, thank you. Do, does any council member believe that he or she cannot decide the matter impartially? Council, Mayor Proten Mayhew?
No.
Councilmember Holloway?
No.
Councilmember Lasse?
No.
Councilmember Christensen?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Not sure if I followed all the negatives correctly, but I believe the answer is no.
Councilmember Benson?
Yeah, no, I do not think that I can not. I, I think I can be impartial.
Thank you. Councilmember Watton?
No.
Great, thank you. Mayor, at this time, I would ask whether any of the appellants or the applicant wish to challenge the continued participation of any council member at this time. Perhaps ask that they raise their Zoom hand so that you could call on them if they do.
The applicant or appellant raises their hand if they wish to challenge? I'm not seeing any raised hands. So the fact there that they do not wish to challenge?
All right, thank you, Mayor. That concludes my questions about appearance of fairness. I would turn it back to you to determine whether to proceed in open session or if the council prefers in a closed session.
Great. Thank you, City Attorney Sturbank. As indicated on the agenda, the council may enter into a closed session with the council to discuss the appeal pursuant to RCW 42.30.140. Two parentheses. Does a council wish to go into a closed session? Mayor Proten Mayhew?
I was hoping before we consider that question, I was hoping that the Mr. Rogers could just put a visual onto the screen for us, which was included in the presentation at our previous meeting, but I was hoping to see a visual of the Vaughn School put up on the screen. I just want to have a relook at that again before proceeding.
Certainly, one moment, let me get that up. Zooms, oops, too much. There.
Councilmember Johnson?
Just want to make sure that I'm looking at the right building. It is the one that's behind that sort of shed looking thing, correct?
Correct. This tall building here, the tallest one you can see, would be the Vaughn School.
Councilmember Benson?
And the, the height of that school? At its, at its highest point?
I don't believe we, excuse me, I don't believe there is a measurement of how high that school is exactly. I would, to be honest, I would have to defer to the transcript to understand if a, a height was ever stated for that structure within the record.
Thank you.
Any other? Mayor Proten Mayhew?
I didn't see any fellow council members with any comments at this point, so I move that we go into, hopefully I'm using the right term, executive session to discuss this.
A closed session.
Closed session.
Correction, the move that we moved to a closed section, session to discuss, for the council to discuss this and get some legal advice.
There's a second by Holloway. Councilmember Holloway, so the motion by Mayor Proten Mayhew to go into a closed session, seconded by Holloway. Councilmember Holloway, any discussion? Mayor Proten Mayhew?
I was just gonna say, I, I thought Councilmember Benson might have a point, and I'm happy to withdraw my motion for now if he wishes.
Dag nabbit, that was what I was trying, I didn't want to, I, I don't know all the, okay. Well, I was just, I, I was just wondering on how the determination is made whether or not we need a closed session.
City Attorney Sturbank?
It, it's the, up to a decision of the council, and if the council so wished, it could, since there's a motion, vote on it. It's often done by, by concurrents and just concurrents of the motion, but, but it is a decision for the council whether you wish to proceed that way. And, and just to back up for one second to address, I think that the preference of the auditor is that when the council recesses out of an open meeting, that the call states the reference to the statutory provision that allows it, and it is stated on the, your agenda, but just to make clear, it would be a closed session pursuant to RCW 42.30.140. Per then, two, close per then, should the council decide to do that.
Right, that is correct. I did read it in earlier. Mayor Proten Mayhew?
Oh yeah, I was just gonna, and to make sure I say this correctly, if I could ask, City Attorney Sturbank is one of the permissible reasons to discuss legal advice with the city's attorney?
Yes, it is, and it is, in this, as you'll recall, we spoke at the beginning that the council is sitting in a quasi judicial capacity, and so it is acting like a judge or panel of judges, and the judges typically, if you're before the Court of Appeals or the Supreme Court, they generally, they may ask questions in public, but they're not required to and often don't deliberate in public, but do so in a closed session, and, and it's in that capacity that the council would be going into executive session and can certainly take up legal questions with its legal counsel at that time.
And so to share with the council that reasoning is why I made the motion.
Any further discussion? I was in favor of going into closed session, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any post name? All right, it looks like we are going, be going into closed session. So City Attorney Sturbank, how long do you anticipate that council will need to meet? And who should join? City Council decides, myself and, let's see.
I, I suggest myself and you, Mayor, and I would say 30 minutes, and if needed, it, we can extend or come out sooner if council decides it doesn't need that much time.
Yes, with the city administrator?
Yes, I'm sorry, thank you, Mayor, at Kansas City Administrator Holloway. Thank you.
Right.
Do it, do we have a link to the meeting?
Yes, IT, do we have a link to the meeting?
I'm working on the email right now, standby, please.
Great, thank you.
I'm not leaving this one until I got the next one.
All right, it should be in your inbox.
It is in our inbox, and so we will, we will be back at 6:45. But thank you, see you in the closed session.
Good evening and welcome to the City of Snoqualny Council meeting. City Council is currently in closed session and will remain in closed session for an additional 20 minutes until 7:05. Thank you. Thank you for participating in today's conference.
Welcome to the City of Stone Colony City Council meeting. Council is currently in closed session and will remain in closed session for an additional 10 minutes until approximately 7:15. Thank you for your patience.
Right now we're, I think everyone is here. So now that we're back in open session, we'll resume with AB 22-047. Is any customer wish to make a motion? As you may hear.
Move to affirm the decision of the Historic Design Review Board for the Rails Hovenga project and request the city attorney prepare a resolution to the effect for adoption at the April 11th regular city council meeting.
Your second?
Second.
Second.
That's where Watson said, so move by Mayor Purtem, make you say by customer one. Need for their discussion? That's for what?
Quite a privilege. I believe we're waiting for council member Benson to join us.
Think you're right. Give it 30 more seconds.
I'm working with him to get him in mayor if we could just give him just a moment. He, we'll get him in in just a second. Mayor, I wonder if someone from IT could verify if the link I have will also work for council member Benson as well?
It should be.
Oh, he's here. He's here.
All right, there he is. Okay. So there was a motion. I re-proach him make you in a second by customer one. Was asking if there's any discussion. Seeing none. Moving to a vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Nay.
Nay.
We have five ayes and two opposed. I'm customer saying customer Vincent, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. So the motion passes. And we will bring resolution back at the next council meeting. Okay. Moving on, our next item of business is agenda bill 22-045. There's a climate to the Parks and Events Commission recommended action. Move to confirm the mayor's recommendation to appoint Brian Prior to position number two on the Parks and Events mission. And Brian Prior is a channel sales manager. His long history of volunteering including teaching Citizens Academy classes and helping to organize events like National Night Out, YMCA, Health of Kids Day, and Northwest Harvest Food Drive. Council may have a motion to confirm there's a requirement of where Brian Prior to the number position number two Parks and Events Mission.
So. Second.
So there was a, let's see, motion by appointment referring to maybe you and the second was customer saying, correct? All right. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, going to vote, although the proof say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Right, it's unanimous, unanimous the pass to confirm Brian Prior. And I see Brian Prior is here. Congratulations, Brian. Looking forward to having you on our Parks and Events Committee. And thank you for attending and knowing that we have a lot more items on the agenda tonight. If you, you're welcome to stay, otherwise I'm obligated to stay for the remainder of the night. So thank you so much. At this time, we'll provide time for residents to comment on items on the agenda. For first few ground rules, on residents who are not present, have a right to have elected representatives perform their duties on behalf of the city in efficient and orderly manner, therefore come through limited three minute speech. Please wait to recognize and say your name and see residents for the record. Direct your comments to council as a whole and not to individual members. Please note that this is not a time to ask questions of the council, mayor, staff, or to engage in debate. Council will quietly and respectfully listen to your concerns. And last, please respect the form of this proceeding as all due respect will be afforded to you. But that said, would anyone like to speak to any concerns that's on the agenda tonight? These are your, raise your hand. All right. Not seeing anyone that's wishing to speak tonight. So we move on to the consent agenda, which contains approval of March 14th, 2022, City Council regular meeting minutes. Approval of claims report dated March 22nd. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second. Okay, moved by Mayor Purtem Mayhew and second by customer Walton. Is there any comments, other comments on the side? Please understand that public comments must be related to topics on the consent agenda. Please submit your comments to two minutes. And please raise your hand if you have any comments regarding the consent agenda. Seeing none. Is there any discussion? Okay, if there's no further discussion, we'll move to vote. All those that approve, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All right, unanimously passes. So you consent agenda is approved. We'll move on to committee reports. Public safety, do you have any committee report?
Uh, not at this time.
Community Development Committee, any committee report?
Nothing at this time.
Our some public firsts?
Uh, no report.
The next committee report is Finance Administration and Agenda Bill 22-044, Robert Caff, Master Consulting Services Agreement. Mayor Purtem Mayhew, would you read in the summary and the motion?
Uh, the purpose of this agenda bill is to appoint a community member. Oh, I have the wrong item. Sorry, is it on the screen there? Let's take a look. The City of Snoqualmie needs additional temporary staff to address short-term staffing needs. Temporary staff would be used on a limited basis to address short-term needs such as supporting the budget process, records retention requirements, and other similar administrative duties. Administration has recommended authorization of a contract with Seattle-based Robert Caff International, Inc. to address the need for temporary staffing services. Uh, move to approve the Robert Caff Master Consulting Services Agreement and authorize the mayor to sign.
Is there a second?
I can do it.
So moved by Mayor Purtem Mayhew, seconded by council member Benson. Is there any public comment regarding, regarding this? So please raise your hand. Seeing none? Any discussion? Councillor Mayhew?
Excuse me, share with the council that when this is discussed at F and um, it disappeared.
Let me put that back up on the screen, please.
Uh, when this was discussed at F and A Committee, uh, there was some discussion, um, with the staff and with the mayor about modifying this agreement, or modifying this, uh, uh, agreement so that it would expire at the end of this calendar year. Um, there was, um, no objection, uh, to that, uh, suggestion. But as all of you are aware, a staff was very busy over the last week, uh, preparing for the council retreat. And they just didn't, uh, didn't have the time, they just weren't able to get to modifying it. So with that in mind, um, and, and in that regard, the discussion was if this needed to be extended into next year. That, uh, the, the staff could come back, or mayor could come back to city council and ask for an extension to the agreement as we got closer to next year. So with that in mind, move to amend uh, the agreement and authorization so that it expires at the end of of 2022. Second.
Second. Okay, there was an additional motion to extend this to the end of 2022, and there was a second by her, I'm concerned with Christianson. Any discussion? Councillor Vincent?
Um, my discussion wasn't with regard to the motion. If you want to go ahead and finish up this motion, then I do have a quick question.
I think we go ahead and take your question regarding this.
Okay, my question is, do we have any departments that aren't understaffed? I mean, these, the staff is it, this comes up constantly. We're, these people are working, um, you know, beyond legal limits and, uh, uh, this is, this is really, uh, it will, is there nobody out there who will work?
On first spot, I don't believe they're working beyond legal limits. They're all within legal limits. They happen to be working some multiple additional, um, functions and some overtime. And I believe that we are seeing this across the board because it is difficult to hire at this point. And, um, one issue is trying to get, if we hire outside of the region, then it's difficult to find someone that will look here because we have, we do not have affordable housing rates. So there's various reasons why we're having, um, finding employees. Maybe Chief Prer, who's been spearheading this whole thing, can also um, provide some insight.
Sure, yeah, no, that's, uh, the mayor hit the nail right on the head. Really what we're focused on with this agreement is uh, trying to, uh, bring on temporary staff to deal with short-term staffing needs. Um, some of those projects that have been put on hold, some of the things that need to get done um, that are important, but not necessarily require a full-time equivalent or an additional position to be filled. So um, as an example, there's, uh, the, the budget work that's coming up this year. In the absence of a director, having a interim in there, having additional hands while they're migrating ERP information um, is going to be very beneficial. We've already used Robert Caff, um, for one position. There was two IT members that were both out on extended and approved leave, um, that we needed to fill and we contacted Robert Caff and they quickly filled it. Um, so we've had good luck with this, uh, but again, it's for, uh, it is for temporary shorter term types of work and, and the mayor is spot on as well. Nobody's working illegally or working longer hours. There's just a lot of different people wearing a lot of different hats to keep the machine moving forward, if I can put it better.
Any other discussion? So we need to vote on the amendment, which should extend it to 2022, and then we'll vote on the main motion after that. So all in favor of approving the amendment to the motion to extend this through an expiring 2022. Say aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? All right, the motion passes, and so we're voting on the main motion that we're voting for the Robert Caff um, agreement with the expiration of 2022. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed, nay? All right, the motion unanimously passes. Both of them do. And, um, any other further report for Finance Administration?
No further report.
Right. So now we're coming up to the mayor's report. There's several different things. One is Seattle Mayor Harold has been working with the Seattle Symphony and honorary consul of Ukraine to organize a special benefit concert to raise funds to send humanitarian assistance to people in Ukraine. It's the Mayor Harold, Mayor Harold has invited the mayors from the region to participate. Now will be attending the mayor's concert for Ukraine on, um, April 4th, 2022 at Benaroya Hall. Um, moving on, each year, the state auditor's office conducts an audit of the city of Snoqualmie and issues audit reports. There are generally two reports issued each year. One focuses on the city's financial statements. And the other report focuses on, um, compliance with federal state laws, the city's own ordinances, resolutions, policies, and procedures, and contracts and agreements. And the state auditor's office recently published the reports on the city of Snoqualmie's audit for fiscal year 2020. The reports reflect a very good audit with no formal audit findings, and not even any significant informal recommendations. The city Snoqualmie has experienced a long history of good audit reports. Since 2009, there have not been any audit findings in Snoqualmie. So, um, thank you to our outstanding accounting group. They've done a nice job. Um, over the past weekend, oh, is there a comment regarding that? Mayor Purtem Mayhew?
Mayor, I just thank you for calling that out, and, and I just, you know, being, um, uh, an accountant by background myself, I, I just want to emphasize to my fellow council members as well as the entire community that a, a clean audit opinion i- is by no means something to be taken for granted. It is no, by no means something that happens automatically. This reflects fantastic hard work by a great accounting department and by uh, employees all over the city who support the accounting function, internal controls and so on. And mayor, uh, I think I, I would just add, um, my congratulations to yours, to just a fantastic employee group that has produced a really um, notable outcome and, uh, just, just great job and thank you, and please keep up the great work.
Great, seeing them. Um, so over the past weekend, the council and staff met and had our annual council retreat. It was great to be able to finally meet in person. Um, each department, each department presented their accomplishments, an outlook, and council discussed council priorities, reviewed a draft capital improvement plan for non-un utilities and utilities. Um, and the draft biennial budget calendar. And so council will continue their discussion regarding council priorities and biennial budget calendar during a special budget workshop and then also the council meeting, um, on April 11th. And as you know, I sit on the Snoqualmie Valley Government Association Transportation Mayor's Committee. And we will be meeting with Josh Brown, who's the executive director of PSRC this week to discuss transportation plans in Snoqualmie Valley and also potential access to funding. And, um, I'm meeting with, um, tomorrow with Representative Callan, Representative Ramos. To thank them for their support on the behavioral health coordinator funding and also funding State Route 18, whitening, and Snoqualmie Parkway. And I will also be talking about other priorities that were mentioned, um, during the council retreat, such as, you know, affordable housing. We need better access to police academy for entry-level police officers. It seems to be a bottleneck. Once you hire them, they have to wait for months in order to get in. Um, so it takes almost a year by the time they are fully trained and ready to hit the streets. Um, then also discuss, um, and there's the uptick in crime in the region, and so kind of talk through, through different, um, issues. So that concludes my mayor's reports. And any questions? Right. Councillor Mayhew?
Um, mayor, just, I, I know I kind of repeat this theme, but I, I think it's worth repeating, but it, when you speak to the representatives, if you could ask them what, uh, actions the council members here could take to further uh, the goals that, um, you just laid out that you'll have in your discussions with them. Uh, I'm sure we'd love to hear from them what we could do to help, you know, back you up in, in, in your messaging.
Great. Sounds great, thank you. All right. But looking like this is the end of our agenda. So next regular meeting of the city council is April 11th. So there being no further business to come for council, I will be entertaining a motion to adjourn.
So move, second.
So motion by Mayor Purtem Mayhew and seconded by customer Holloway to adjourn the meeting. All those approve, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, motion passes. Time is 7:43 and we are adjourned. Thank you and have a great night.